Okay, well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting. The Lakota Board of Education. Ms. Logan?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. DeSaper?
Here.
Ms. Carroll?
Here.
They're welcome.
Here. Please rise for the pleasure of the reasons. Great. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll know.
Second.
Ms. Logan?
Casper?
Yes.
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 Yes, this brings us on to our comments section of the evening. Board President comes first. I don't have anything that I need to share.
I think I'm good too, just waiting for our guests or.
Ms. Logan?
I have a couple things. The first, um, we have some guests here who had a donation. We have an opportunity. I completely have it. Okay. We did have some guests here who had a donation. And then secondly, on my section of the agenda, if you will see an approval, it's transferred to the budget table person. But I wanted to kind of talk to you about that, but they did not accept it. So we set up by policy a running data. And last fiscal year was the first year that we committed to be a purchase that fund. We transferred 4.38 dollars into that fund based on the calculations set within the policy. If you look at the policy this year and those really calculations, the transfer is made would be 732,413 dollars and 30 cents. I put it on the agenda eight years earlier. But I'm also bringing this forward to ask you, do we want to wait a month for that? You have the five-year forecast that's coming forward to the end of November. If you recall, the last five-year forecast in May, we were predicting a spending deficit for the first year in eight years. The last thing I want to do is to recommend a transfer into a budget stabilization fund that would at the same time put us into a spending deficit. So I'd rather take another month and take a look at that five-year forecast. We know more now. I was told last week on a call with ODU that not to accept any more cuts from the state. So the cuts that we got at the beginning of this year are if for this fiscal year. As passes, delinquencies were not there as we predicted in our first settlement that we received in September. And as many of you saw in the newspaper, we're going through a revaluation which is predicted somewhere around 20%. So I'd like to run that forward for discussions. Take a look at what our outlook looks like for this year based on this new information. And then if you still feel like the transfer is warranted and you want to do it, then absolutely, I think we should move forward with it. But I'd rather take another month as we modify your forecast, you know more information, and then make some decisions at the same time. So. That's my hat for the next one. Western concerns. I think if that's your recommendation, I think we can probably wait and see when we have that.
This is somewhat related to what I'm related, I guess. Really, I have a couple of finance and school funding model. I know there's got new momentum that's come around on being speaker. It was supposed to be introduced to legislators, but it wasn't. Where are we at taking updates? It just gives me a better kind of life context.
So I think there may be information that I have, which is, there's a whole lot of state legislators who are in pan-pan mode. They wanted to try to get it introduced before the election. For the past four weeks now, I've been ready to testify. That knows that it's like a joke. Sure, you're going off the test party for four weeks in a row. But the momentum is there, but the election and, you know, COVID also has kind of dampened that a little bit. Whether we're able to testify at the first of virtually, so they're going through all of those pieces, but it's ready. There's also senators who are ready to sponsor it at the Capitol in the Senate as well. So it's kind of a left and right, but.
Thank you.
I've received communication that I was Zoomers are having trouble here. So maybe we're moving on once we rip off the mask on. Jenny, I certainly believe we need to make that transfer, but I am willing to have that discussion as a part of the discussion. Yeah. The last thing I want to do is say, yes, we should transfer into there. And then, like I said, then we're in a standing deficit. And so I'd just rather take a little bit of time and look at the full picture since we have one.
So do you need to make a motion to approve the agenda or just need to just strike out?
Table it. Yeah, table it. Yeah, would be a priority if we go to make a motion to approve. Would just do items. Yep.
Great, thanks.
And the second, the second item under my update is we have some ladies here to talk to us about the donation from the Leadership 21 2020 group. So I'm going to ask them to come to the line.
I'm trying to breathe.
I hear you. I know.
Good afternoon. I am Yasmin Brown Jones, Director of memberships. It's just a little chamber line. As well as Director of our Leadership 21 program. So we are here, I am here with great excitement to present a donation to the Lakota School District. I am so excited at what these young folks have done. I say young folks, they're all young and lively. One of our own board members, Ms. Kelly Casper, was a part of Leadership 21 class of 2020. And each year, they choose a project. They decide the project, they decide what it's all about, where it goes, who it benefits. And this year was extra special because not only did they have to figure out how to complete their leadership training through COVID-19, but also decide on a project that would be impactful. So they're leaving a legacy. And I'll let Ms. Rhonda Crowder come up to tell you more about what that is because she was actually one of the four group leaders for the project. So with excitement.
We really appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight a little more information about what we've accomplished. We're proud graduates, Kelly and I, also proud leaders of the project along with team leadership and efforts. And really, it was everyone in, everyone participating, and allowed us to do something that we felt was remarkable under the circumstances that we were given. And as Yasmin mentioned, it was our desire to do a legacy gift that would go beyond the 2020 class. So we were able to establish a fund with the Westchester Liberty Foundation by which future classes may give in perpetuity. So that was step one. And step two was to do what we're about to do here. And that is to present a gift to the Lakota School District to help offset some of the additional costs that we're assuming we're a part of dealing with COVID-19. We know that the district staff has to provide school supplies for students. And so this is where our heart took up. And so on behalf of Leadership 21 Class of 2020, we'd like to present to you a check for $5,000.
Who doesn't love a massive check?
That's a big check.
I'd actually like to see Mrs. Logan take that to the bank.
I'm not trying that, but yeah.
Thank you to the Chamber of Lords.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our student spotlight section of the evening. Ms. Logan?
So every year, 1.5 million junior takes the PFAT. Only 1% are named medical merit summer finalist. This year, six of these scholars are from Lakota. Normally, we would have students here with COVID-19 and limited seating. We decided to do a little bit different and we have a big.
It just, it's humbling to me that I was one of millions to be chosen for this award. And so it just puts in perspective all the work I've been doing.
Actually, my summer finalist is considered a pretty big honor.
It's a very nice honor and it's a great opportunity. Kind of been very academically focused for a long time. Parents always, I've always put an emphasis on doing well at school and setting myself up for success later in life. So this is kind of like seeing the fruits by labor for the reality.
As a semi-finalist, colleges realize the caliber you have as a student.
I didn't want to study for the PFAT. I do contact me for like 15 minutes every day. And I just made a friend running team and I think doing just a little everyday, you know.
So the work and effort you put into this and just receive all word for recognition for it's truly an experience. And it's just really exciting.
My number one college choice is Carnegie Mellon in Pittsburgh. And I hope to study an information systems major there, which is like computer science, but more of like integrating it with systems that people use rather than straight math. So like problem solving, which is what I enjoy.
So I am planning to go to a foreign college after high school. I'd like to major in something biology related, maybe by my library. Maybe just my research and cell biology.
I have applied to the University of Miami in tough state. Drew School is the Rose Hillman Institute of Technology and I want to be a software engineer.
I hope to go to University of Cincinnati to major in.
I'm undergrad. I want to major in medical sciences. And I'm thinking UC or OSU in a state type college.
I've had some remarkable English teachers. I've really enjoyed all the plays that we found to see. We had, we had a trip to perform Romeo and Juliet in ninth grade that I really enjoyed.
Seeing this second star word means that it wasn't just a fluke. And that meant that I truly cared about forming a connection and bond with teachers and truly learning at school. And to just be recognized for that was one of the greatest experiences of my life because it meant that it was a sign that I do actually care about doing this. I actually enjoy school and know that the teachers enjoy acting in class.
So my favorite memory of the Westwood travel happened last year's upcoming, my junior year. It was my last one coming in real life and I had a lot of fun there.
When I did get my perfect PCP score, I remember because I'm really close with my honors algebra teacher in 10th grade. So anytime I have a team winter, I need a rec letter, I always go to her. And getting a perfect score was a dream of mine since freshman year.
There's always a way to get through whatever struggles and the happenstance of to just like know importance of relationships with other people.
There are little basic controls, but overall you just have to be kind of ready for everything.
I think that we learn that we can act. I feel like a lot of times we can change things, there's that stuff, but they're really not. It helps us to change things.
To get better job and enjoy and appreciate every moment, every conversation you have because every conversation you have with a teacher or a classmate is truly a gift.
Being able to adapt accurately, being able to change yourself to suit the situation and still being able to accomplish what you want is a very big blessing taken away from it.
I feel like it might be a textbook reference anymore because then I just need to get it for what I should be here in real life.
I mean, I wish they were here that we could congratulate them, but you know, I think that we say this all the time. We've got great kids here in Lakota and they're the top of the top. Super proud of them and what they represent for our community. And for our staff who have walked this journey with them. Okay, moving on to our OSDA business honor roll.
Thank you, Board. It is our honor tonight to honor four people who represent some local industries and some international and national industries, companies that have supported our cybersecurity program from the very beginning. Without them and their support, the great things we have going on for our kids in cyber would not be happening at all. We have a bit of instruction. We have a quick video to explain the work that they've done and put together for us. And then a memento from OSDA and from the Board of Education. The four honorees tonight, first is Terry Williams. Terry is the Chief Information Officer for Belkin LLC. Terry has been instrumental to supporting this program from the very beginning. Belkin has financially supported the program in terms of all software and certifications and licenses and teacher training and support all the way through. Terry has been by our side the entire way. He has asked his and his team to deliver on amazingly well. Ron Ford is with ASRC Federal. He had been with Belkin in the past. It was our connection to him. He has, he is a Lakota resident. He is a Lakota parent. He has been a tireless advocate for this program. He heads up an advisory board group that we have that meets once a month and has met since we started the program. And he is part of a group called Cyber Friday. And we meet every Friday morning at 8:00 AM to talk all things cyber, to make sure that we're supporting the program. The second member of that group is Daryl Santafer, a program technology. And Daryl is also a Lakota resident and apparently grad and a soon to be grad. He is our technical advisor as we go through this is also there every Friday morning as we talk about what are the ins and outs and the nuts and the bolts and bits and bites. And we need to make sure that we're providing for our kids. He is a tenacious detail oriented advisor to us, which has been just unbelievable. The fourth member to be recognized, that is Lou Olmeyer. And his company ATC is in Westchester. And he is the marketing director for ATC. And he does an amazing job of pulling in all of our, we call them cyber surfers, our mentors for all of our students who are in the cybersecurity program. He has a huge network of folks and gets a lot of recognition for our people out there. Without them and the group of people that they bring up on board to help and support us in this program would not be what it is.
The numbers keep their mind bottling for me and there's just not enough talent.
Our industry partners came to us and we have a need. We need strong cyber professionals in this Cincinnati area. And we were able to react.
This all started from a conversation with two visionary people around the concept of how we provide an opportunity for our kids that sets them up for success immediately after high school.
The Lakota Cyber Academy is an extremely innovative program that allows the industry to truly drive their incoming workforce.
We are able to train the students, not only with real world experiences, but also to get the certifications that the industry is looking for and equally retain the students here locally.
It has been so incredible to watch our industry partners truly drive their career in Lakota.
Business partners are like blood. What we do is program. Without them, we couldn't start it and we can't make this a real opportunity.
We're looking for anybody that's who wants to be secure. We always need that.
They can call early on, reset our classes. They can become mentor to our campus students.
I was just going to make a point, I can talk to our class. And I was really intrigued by that, just seeing the things that they did and how they were making a picture. That really, that really kind of struck me personally.
When students have the opportunity to interact with professionals, it makes the potential career real.
Lou Olmeyer and the director of advanced technology consulting really inspired me to get to see people who have actually come in.
I think it just moves on a surreal level. And I feel like I've put, like I'm showing more information.
It's a lot more interesting to see, to hear from people who are actually in the field of cybersecurity. Kind of hear their experiences. Definitely where you come from, it shows what, what every American do now.
We are always looking for companies that would like interns. We have some very, very talented students that are all looking for a place to practice the craft that they're learning.
With a physical partnership, partners can help aid more with it.
We are trying to want stand up and animate the class for the students. Anybody that has an IT company, how do you understand the cost of this?
Boy, wouldn't it be cool if we had a room that was lots of different kinds of hardware? Wouldn't it be cool if we have server that we could connect with malware? Wouldn't it be cool if we could simulate the soft experience for students?
Students get outside the box. You give a challenge list to a student that's never been trained. They're going to look at that as possible. They're going to hunt on that one. We find some very new collaborative, interesting methods to get things done when you sit down with students.
I want us to be seen as a national or global hub of preparedness for cybersecurity in the workplace.
If you're a company that is interested in all getting involved with very progressive or to this right. I do encourage you.
This is the best time to homegrown your talent.
This is a unique opportunity. We have 100 students ready to load right now, everything they can about cybersecurity. So as an industry professional, it's time to get back.
There's some of us that don't like that. The best be happy you want.
We're here to get a picture.
We find that table.
Okay, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. We appreciate you. Okay, this moves us to our first public comment section of the evening. This is for, this is for attendables only. Just a reminder that this is limited to three minutes and you must say your name and your address prior to this public comment. We didn't have any email comments during this portion of the public comment section. Is there anyone seeing anybody in the room unless they're hiding? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
We have one.
We have one.
Vanessa Wells.
Okay, Ms. Wells, please state your name and your address.
I'm you.
I'm you, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Vanessa Wells, 4487 Aspen Drive. I actually just had a few questions on one of the policy changes on the agenda. The attendance policy for VLO, the wording seems a little bit vague to me, so I just have a few questions. Does each individual teacher decide this or will this be consistent among all of them? And will the individual criteria, if they do decide it individually, will that be laid out clearly for the students and parents and caregivers so that we know exactly what that will be? Also, the wording in there implies too that there are mandatory Zoom sessions. And I'm not sure if I'm just misunderstanding that, so I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification there. If any of you could help with that, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
That's all.
Here are none. Mr. Roman or Ms. Miller, you want to address those questions?
Yeah, the, the policy that's up is just the addition of language of medical excuse. That we can use that as a, keeps them out of the hospital for tenure rule of the tennis rules. It used to be all absences would apply against your number of hours. But now common sense has prevailed a year later. And now they're saying medical excuse would stop the count of number of hours and days. I, I'm not aware of any additions to the policy that discuss VLO. All I'm aware of is that including the definition of medical excuse and the number of days and hours suggested are offered as determined by the district. So I can't speak to the VLO question on further.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to board reports, I will start with the Board Policy Committee. I was not able to attend the last policy committee, so this is Casper and Mr. Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Roman.
Yes, on Friday, September 25th, we met with our NEOL representatives, Norm Burkhardt, to go over the NEOL poll update, volume 39, number one. There are 14 policies before you for first vote, 13 of which are revisions and one is a new. There are no Lakota updates included tonight. Just kind of go through these kind of quickly. Policy 1520, basically a clerical error and adding the word not. That's only one word changed the entire policy, but because of putting the word not in there makes a big difference to the policy. So they felt it warranted attention at board meeting.
1530, Evaluation of Principles. OTES, which is Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, the removal of references to student growth measures, also applied to principles as well. Policies together, 2260 and 226001. These also go along with the new updates to Title IX policy, which I believe later tonight you'll do a second read and vote on our updated policy for Title IX as well. This was one that's also looped into there as well, that would keep us up to date with that same language as dealing with discrimination. Policy 2270 and Policy 8800 both deal with the same changes to House Bill 164. This new law defines religious expression and assignments can be graded or scored using ordinary academic standards and shall neither reward nor penalize a student based on religious content. And both policies would reflect Ohio law. Policy 2431, Athletics, this reflects the requirement of ORC 3313 about a minimum grade point average and would also reflect current law. 3124 removes any reference to employment of administrators, since Neola believes that the employment of administrators is covered in Policy 1520. Policy 5200, the attendance policy, which was mentioned earlier, just includes the definition of medical excuse.
Policies 5610 and 5611, these policies provide for the use of the term for products of the evidence, which is what we use already. This has spun that out a little more specifically, those two, per student discipline. Policy 6152 and 615201 provide authorization to allow for online permits of fees, fines, and charges. As Norman said, Neola's got up to the 21st century and lies to be doing a lot of this online already. And now we've got the policies that are running and give some more support. The new policy is Policy 845001, which is basically, if you remember back in August, we had already started this work with the guideline. So this policy basically is almost a cut base exactly to the guideline we asked them to develop for us. So now we have a policy, but we are already using, uh, that line 845001 is already implemented. There are three other policies that will be coming later down the road. Those day with the Treasury's office, you're still reviewing those three, now part of this update. And once we have time to review those, Norman has asked to be part of that discussion as well. There's always some fatalities in there, he wants to make sure that Treasury's office understands and wants to be penalized as a criminal for this.
Another question on the policy as well. Mrs. Wells, 5200.
Yes.
So the tracking of attendance is not new this year? That's not a new addition to this?
Not that I've added, that I'm aware of.
I don't recall something that he doesn't. And it does appear that an exact expression of the teacher. So I can understand why that might be something I want to look at and make sure that it's there.
And the official attendance is taken in the building, it's in my office, to the teacher, where the office secretary, the people from policy, administrator, and the founder of the organization.
Are we on the, are we not?
I don't know about VLO, unfortunately, I can't speak to that because I'm not sure what steps in different places with VLO. So perhaps Minister can kind of offer some guidance, maybe some follow-up on that.
And there's a specific section that says, "Tracking attendance for the 2021 school year". This is a first read.
Yes.
So we'll get the program plan from the policy committee, verify everything. I'm not sure that every one's been consistent.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Can you be a reason for it?
We had a coffee chat last Wednesday at seven o'clock. There were, it fluctuated a bit, but up to about 200 people, it moved by at most. The coordinator changed a little bit, we're trying to do live call exchange, we're trying to get the preponderance of questions to kind of rise to the top rather than trying to scroll the whole time. The questions, and that seemed to be a good way to capture things. As well, again, well-attended and soon to work well. District Parent Council will be meeting on Wednesday. President's council met last Thursday with ideas of how to do fundraising and then instead of campaigning, you can do much conversation. And we think we have a meeting of conversation that we're planning on October 28th. More information will be posted on that, that's in the comments. So we're working on that. In the time limit, but you know. Just believe me, I don't think it's a bad idea. On topic? Absolutely. And there's study.
Any questions for the community group? Sorry, we want to go on a sec.
We've not had a meeting since our last meeting, however, you did get a first party, I'm assuming you saved the date for showcase, typically there's a whole bunch. Apparently they're not being able to do that this year, so they're looking at their ways a little differently. They did last year, you may recall, there was a state show, where they had students display their work, indeed after everyone. So they're planning on doing that virtually, October 26th through 29th. As part of that, interestingly doing that, they're having boxes delivered to all board members within the calendar, they're actually handled in those. October 20th and 21st, with snacks that are going to be created by the culinary students, because that's always part of that. Because the culinary students put on the dinner as part of their showcase. So you can look for those, October 20th and 21st. And I hope that some on through October 26th, which I'm not, they still are on the plane, but they don't have it all. I wonder how exactly that's going to be handled, but some will be live, some will be filmed, and you can click on to see some of the work that's happening in public tech. And just FYI, now they're looking at moving towards 350% capacity. The month of November, they're looking to go towards 75% capacity. And then the month of December going towards 100% capacity as a planned program. So I'm sure we'll know about that, but I would be next.
I think one of the hardest parts about sort of our global pandemic is that. I think we all thrive in the environment, being with the kids, seeing the kids, whether it's athletic, musical, or board, functions we go to, and experience. Virtual just doesn't, doesn't have the same, so I think that would be more of a, I think everybody's ready to move on already. And if we get to a point where students are seeing, seeing what's happening, it's a little bit. The point of any other questions before. I think we're all going to solve our bits.
I think this is on to it. So maybe we actually wound up South West Regional, it was meeting last week. And nice turnout for that, there were several pieces and parts to that, teacher leader nominations, good written schools. And I think like your veteran board members, all the work that has developed, worked with the Capitol Conference. Misters officers who also nominated and selected. We did not legislate about data as a part of that, just a few pieces from that, which is under update. Senate Bill 352 has been introduced, a period of many of the provisions that were put in place through House Bill 197 and House Bill 64. To carry over since we're now in a normal long-term situation. Those provisions were put in place in order to deal with the pandemic. And the changes made about being able to do virtual meetings and deliberation comments and things like several of those pieces. So this legislation would keep those provisions in place for December of 2021, the date to expire long, December. House Bill 6 is dominating the conversation at the state level, and that is about subsidizing the two elected plans. Through the ballot. Speaker of the House changed, couldn't hold this, and that certainly has been a part of the conversation for several weeks now. We're expecting during busy season, following the election, as this is the second year of this legislation's legislative session. And several dates have already been scheduled for November and December. As you mentioned before, House Bill 305, the Patterson Fair Funding Plan, which has been marked as so. Is expected to receive some revenue retention from the election, possibly in the summer. February 1, 2021, the end choice, which was developed through the Congress, there's two bills that I mentioned earlier. Is scheduled to go into place again, and 70% of districts would have a feeling built. So the impact of that continues, and it's not, that it can be built across the state. House Bill 606, I think we mentioned last time, but again, part of the legislative update was signed by the line, that's liability protection. In addition to the salary, it's according to political subdivisions. According to Ray's report, who said funding touches to expect the state will support that, which is great to hear. Two other things, they're still looking for student successes for 2020 student achievement. And for the conference coming up in November, so that statement makes sense, but we have students during that. So we need to put a grid out about that, I think we had five firsts participating for last year's conference. We did, we have an excellent agenda, so we want to be a part of this year, but it'd be great to see our students to be fit. Conference is still coming up, I pass out to all of you, a popular leadership learning, great opportunity for professional development. And it will be available for registered through December, so you do not necessarily have to watch all of those sessions now. Take the time, if you've got an appropriate time, take this issue, whatever. The state was unveiled in COVID-19, they had a dashboard for schools and families. There's a school dashboard and a children dashboard, in order to give families an opportunity to make decisions for their families. Which was great to see as well. There's several reservation changes to the legislative platform, none of which are really surprising topics in any way. There's a reservation around racism and equity in education. A reservation around ensuring that the graduation rate. We talked about this for a long time, but we did not get the change into the legislative platform before. And penalizing districts where students with disabilities require additional time, so that's now officially legislative. As we know, the platform is what always been there, users in order to do legislative ramp, because of its numbers. There's a resolution, 2023, is about ongoing professional development and supporting that. 2024 is about requiring vouchers to be funded in a way that is not deduct funds from public schools. The final resolution was requiring all private, non-corporate schools receiving public tax, but in money. Be held to the same law with accountability, and also to be subjected to the same financial reporting audit requirements. And so China, the rest of us are going to. Finally, I'll be participating in a webinar offered through the National School Board Association on public school transformation. And that will be coming up, and I'm going to go to learn about that. Bringing together, even educational authorities from across the state, so it's a good discussion. Do you, do you have to move?
I think it covered a lot, as far as the state funding cuts. I can't speak to anything other than control.
And as far as other legislative names, I think it belongs under legislative. There was an article last week that spoke to our county auditor. Is dealing with the state of Ohio and the recent wind valuation. But there's only so much that can be done by the governor. So I know that's kind of been in the media lately, that there are rules and things at a state level that dictate what happens, so. Just kind of going into that. The other thing too, with House Bill 305, I agree, wants election. Is through, I think we'll see some on this net on a lot of, a lot of things, including Ed's was.
Just really two quick things that kind of delve into the legislative. One is I would draw your attention to watch what the state school board is doing in terms of racism. There was some strong feelings about that earlier this summer and others some sort of counter to that, we don't really understand. But I refer you all to just take a look at some of the verbiage that is coming from some of the state school board members that my association is pushing back on a little bit, so I'll probably have more on that later this week. But we'll surprise by that. The other thing, just, and it kind of falls into, I was going to give a brief ministry report here in a few minutes, but just as a precursor to that. Obviously, we've all been in close conversations with the governor's office in terms of COVID-19 and quarantine. And so he alluded to that a little bit, his comments, the governor did, last week in terms of hearing from superintendents about the quarantine guideline, the regulations. I think one of the most frustrating parts right now is, you know, obviously don't want anyone getting sick, we don't want anyone to get it or worse. But there are now departments of health in certain counties, Delaware County being one of them, that are changing the rules for quarantine. And so it's difficult when we're saying sort of the same things that Delaware County has. And the example that I'll use is they are not quarantining students if the students are wearing masks. And the person infected has a mask as well, no matter how many people are apart. So for us to say that that's okay for Delaware County, but not Butler County or Southwest Ohio, that's a problem. So I think that falls in the legislature, and I'm sort of.
I'm sure.
But we're advocating for that, I brought that up to our health commissioner. I don't believe she's a, I'm going to take it on herself unless somebody above her, kind of the Department of Health says that it's okay or that she's sure. It's frustrating.
We've been hearing from parents that are frustrated with the quarantine as well.
Every day.
So one of the things that I have is the governor's authorized a study, so will we be part of that study or focus on that? How, how are you thinking it's going to?
So the, the study, as far as I know, we mentioned it not too long, maybe two weeks ago, 10 days ago now.
Yeah.
Talking about 10 school districts in the state of Ohio to get some data and get some information on quarantine. I talked to his people about another district in the state of Ohio that's been in session as long as we have, full go, and has the data and everything else. Tells that we'd be willing to share with the governor's office and also make a logical decision for next step. So I've not heard back, but I did put a plug in that we would be anticipating, as long as there's just something to track data and quarantine numbers and can get our kid back safely, but sooner, I think we should explore that out.
It was interesting when this happened on the Southwest regional meeting to hear all of the updates and the platform changes. I know that it was interesting too, it was about a 48-minute meeting. So Mr. did our part in all the awards, what I do in person, so it was kind of interesting to see it that way. We talked last time about that the state is not, the federal is not going to waive the state testing. And so OD has come out with some resources for schools and districts to help prepare kids virtually. And the only other thing I have is that today, the U or Friday, the USDA extended the free meals for all students through the end of the calendar. Or the end of the academic year. It had been through the end of December, through the end of the calendar year, and now they are extending it through the end of the school year. That's all I have. Yes, that was very nice. That was one of the hardest ones. I was going to say, I got a question. Silence for a very short slideshow. Please definitely missed, you've got a great new director, Mark, and will do a terrific job for us, but I was. I've got a legend when you put that, these minds, and you've done it for a very long time somehow.
Great, any other legislative questions? Mr. Bro, I just wanted to mention to you, sometimes when you hear legislative updates, it feels like a ton. You should be getting emails from OSBA that give you daily digest on all the legislative action that's happening in the space. A lot of them gets mentioned at the meetings. You should get an email if you're not, we can help you navigate however it takes, maybe. It just, it helps to see it and then hear it. Okay, this brings us on to facilities, we have not had a facilities committee, but I wanted this on the agenda. I and Mr. Farnell had sat on the facilities committee. And we, the committee work that we were doing around facilities obviously stalled as we entered into COVID. Um, and we, the committee work that we were doing around facilities obviously stalled as we entered into COVID. Um, I wanted to bring this up this evening though, because I think it's important that we consider, um, re-energizing that work. And I understand we're in a complex time now, but at the same rate, I think that if we don't engage in this conversation now, we're missing a huge opportunity to really reflect on what we've been doing in education since March. The impact that that has on our facilities and the work that we already did to kind of just recalibrate our thinking around that. And so, um, so I just wanted to throw that out to the board. Um, I would like Mr. Earl to serve on the facilities committee with me. Obviously, we've only got a few months left, um, until we have our organizational meeting, which we'll, we'll talk about committees in January. Uh, but I just wanted to throw that out to the board. And I didn't know, Mr. Sarge, did you have anything that you wanted to say, or are you just here to add some questions? Fantastic.
Moral support.
Fantastic. Um, so maybe what we could do is, uh, get something on the books. Maybe it can be a Zoom meeting or something maybe with the architects and just, again, kind of, uh, it'd be a great opportunity to bring Mr. Earl into the conversation. Kind of talk about what we've done with the conversations with the work that we did around the auctions. Um, and then if we could think about how might we get to a place where we can just be reflective to then really say, okay, when do we want to hit the ground running and get this work done? Full steam ahead.
I don't agree, but I think it's like a recap. Where, where does this stand now?
Yeah, I mean, I think I've said this before, um, I feel like I say things a lot over and over again, but you know, we, um, I think we have a responsibility to our community. I know that there's tension that exists between, um, talking about facilities and the funds that it will take to update our facilities. At the same rate, what we know is that our facilities are our largest investment buyer taxpayers in our community. So, um, we have the responsibilities of board to keep this conversation going, because the reality is the buildings don't stop aging because COVID exists. They don't, they keep continuing to age. Um, and as we've learned since March, they continue to get updated and replaced then, um, previously.
And my request, as a part of that work initially, that the list itself, again, it's two hundred and six million. If we were to do everything that was in the books, that we separate that out between needs and wants, so that's very clear. And when I did ask that question, man, I appreciate you sending me what we needed to take out for this year. But I have not seen the list itself, whatever that's going to be broken down to what are our needs and what are our wants. So I would appreciate that being part of the work as well.
Well, and I think that's going, uh, that could potentially shift, right? I mean, our needs and wants based on now, what they were back in last January before COVID. And so again, I just think we have to initiate this conversation to re-engage and then start filling the board in and on your path. Our big binder will probably be reset in some way, shape or form, but if we could get a meeting on the books next month, that would be great and listen. Fantastic.
The only action items that we need to consider is we did apply for the expedited agreement of partnership with OSC. Yeah, um, that was approved last December, so coming up on year more where we want to still participate in that. But what has to be action again, said, you know, participating in that program for another year. Something about that, this is a piece of this part as well. Um, I have been in contact with OSC, they're on standby, they're ready to proceed, uh, the conversation, whenever we are, as well, they're up to date as well. So we're ready to go to fire it back up as soon as we'll just stay in and do a big cap.
Thank you, Chris. All right, uh, safety committee. Give the update. I mean, we, we met as. So yeah, so we're all on the safety committee. Um, we have an opportunity to meet and do this a few times a year with a lot of key stakeholders in the committee as well, like safety in our schools. And I, I don't really have much to report out, but I'm sorry.
Really, this, um, had most of our SROs on board in the floor, some administrators. We just talked about how safety looks now in this COVID era. Um, before we talked about shutting our door, keeping them locked and off the bells. Now for improved airflow, we like to open, have more airflow, so how does it, that's safe and top of the wrong. Those type of things, talked about, um, just looking at, you know, kids are outside more often when they make face masks, brains. So how do you handle that? Check a different perspective on, you knew your drills, looking at things that you need to do. Get that in consideration, that's a little bit different going forward. So our SROs are going to try to incorporate some of those, uh, things in kind of drills to get our, our staff thinking a little bit differently. Now that we have to do things a little bit differently with the facility situation. And again, you just, uh, you just made the talk about how to do it better, safety is always up in the forefront of our mind. If safety doesn't go away, it's going to be trouble. It's not helping all the safety aspects, but the other part, you still have other careers that you want to make sure that they're stepped, so it's early, they're figured out on a daily basis as well.
Yeah, we're lucky to have an outstanding producer, there's more, we're on that, um, in that meeting. You know, it was evident that, you know, they're, they're thinking four steps ahead of us, right? They're, they're at the schools every day, they're working with the staff, working with the administrators. And so it was just personally for me reassuring, you know, I, I had some questions around, you know, what does, what does the COVID restrictions mean with the safety protocols? And all these things will be wrestled and it's like, I mean, they were on it, they knew what they were doing. And so I just think it speaks a ton to professionalism and the commitment of the nation's work to put SRS in the building and to give them the ability to do what they need to do. Questions? Yeah, this brings us on to the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. I said pretty much, um, a little bit about, about the quarantine. We know that that's a hard thing for our parents to go through with their kids and hard for our kids to miss two weeks or fourteen days when they're in quarantine. Um, we, if you look at the COVID dashboard that comes out every Monday, um, you can see that we are up to two hundred and seventy four. Students that are quarantining right now, um, which is, we, we had a pretty good week, week before. This was obviously a bad week and you can see the number broken out by, uh, voting and by grade band and some of the cases too. And Betsy and her team have added, um, the component that the board asked about in terms of coming here school related, coming here not school related. And so that's part of the, it's been part of the COVID dashboard for several weeks now, or almost months now. So I appreciate her putting that out there, um, with her team. As I mentioned before, we've been pushing back on the length of time, we don't want people to get sick. Um, but at the same time, it just seems like, um, our kids that are quarantining are not catching it by and large. And so we want that to continue, um, but it is causing some hardships, especially when we're starting to have cases now of students being quarantined twice. And so they're quarantining for twenty eight days, um, of school and what the impact is for that. Um, part of our response to that too, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, that we are moving our PD day to Monday, November second. So we do a remote learning exercise, uh, in the event that we would have to shut down on the, we're doing that exercise on the thirty fourth, so. Um, and the other main purpose for that is we can clean our buildings because we've been doing really good with keeping people out, um, intentionally. And so what you see now, I think, from many school districts in our area and in Butler County, they're coming back, full go. And I'm getting emails and calls every day about how are you going and where do you, you know, the lessons learned and things like that from, from all over. So, um, again, the exercise is just an exercise that should not give an indication that we are wanting to go remote or we're going for remote, just in case we have to. It's a good practice for all of us and we're going to clean our buildings. Um, so I wanted to mention that. And I also want to mention that, um, Chris, did you guys pick up the masks last week? Probably, yep, thank you for making that happen. So, um, through Butler County, we have, uh, picked up an additional over twelve thousand adult sized masks and twenty eight thousand children child sized masks. So, um, we're trying to get supplies, um, in case we need them, uh, just like every other school in Butler County as well. So I did want to mention that. Um, again, conversations with governor's office, ODH and Butler County Health Department, all of them. Uh, thanks to Mr. Goldman and the COVID response team, including Betsy, for, um, working on the new cases that pop up every single day. Nights and weekends. A lot going on. Any questions about any of that that I can entertain?
Now, do we still have no cases of kids that have been quarantined getting the virus?
We may have.
And is, what is, what is ODH saying about why Delaware can shorten their quarantine and that be happening?
I haven't received a response yet from my inquiries. Um, but Delaware County has, um, been pushing back from the get go on this. Uh, they have a lot of medical professionals that live in their county. I don't know if that's the reason, um, but.
It's impossible if they're picking shoes.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if their health commissioner in Delaware County is going down the line by doing that, I'm not sure. But I'm starting to hear other counties are going to pick up with it too. So I don't think it's, you know, it, it affects other things too, let's be honest. It affects kids' academic setting, which is first and foremost, but also impacts when kids are out for extracurricular sports and other things. And so, um, it may be, uh, some, and equity to county by county, which I don't think that's a good thing for the state of Ohio either.
Just hard when it's a high school student, so it doesn't touch it so many more, so many more kids.
Yeah, and it, and it does, and those kids are more active and moving around, you know, tend to socially not distance as much maybe as they should when they're out of school. So.
So are they quarantining at all or are they not quarantining at all in those counties?
I, I will send you what, um, when I receive it from Delaware County, um, on some of the local board. I think there are some cases where they're quarantining more than, but I know that Jenny and I were two feet apart right now and both had masks. And I was positive if she wasn't, she would not be able to, according to their guidance. It just came out, I believe, last Tuesday or Wednesday.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Hearing none, we'll move on to treasures recommendations. Um, do I have a motion to approve items A, B, and C?
Um, the only thing that's unique on this list is the resolution for bond refinancing. So we have an opportunity to, just like a lot of people right now are refinancing their own mortgages because the interest rates are very low. We have the same opportunity to refinance a couple pieces of debt that are still on our books. Um, right now, and of course, we know that the market could change. But right now, the predicted savings would be three point, I'm rounding, three point seven million dollars in savings. We'd be going from, um, one of, one of the issues, the average, uh, interest rate is four point three, going down to less than two. The other one is four point five going down to two. So it just makes sense to look at things like this. This is just an authorizing res- resolution. There's a whole lot of work that goes into actually getting this done. Um, but I'm asking for your approval tonight so that we can proceed and hopefully, uh, save the taxpayers of this district some money.
Does those savings go right back to the taxpayers and lowering, lowering the mortgage charge, not to the district?
That's right, because we collect from the taxpayers the amount necessary to pay the debt service payment. So we can't collect more. So it is a direct savings to our taxpayers when we do this.
Any other questions, Ms. Logan?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then I need to have a motion to table item C.
Second. Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes. This brings us on to the next item, superintendent's recommendations. We have items A through D, do I have a motion to approve? Discussion?
Mrs. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes. All right, this brings us to our second public comment section of the evening. This is for items, um, they don't have to be even.
Excuse me for one minute, I don't know if it's protocol, Mr. Goldman and his family answer that while we're looking for. Okay. Looking like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And explain to her.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I, I whiffed on that one earlier, because when I did my reviews, I was just looking at the top section and not the bottom section, that the calls were referencing. What we will do is we have, we have three people that have been working with our VLO. I just, uh, talked to Mr. Coney, uh, Kim McGowan, Lori Brown, and Sean Smith have been working on attendance with VLO. And we'll get clarification on procedures set out as outlined of what we're currently doing to ensure we don't put teachers out on an island to make their own call on determination of absences. So that's my fault, I missed it, but I think I got it clarified. And then what we'll do is we'll make sure we clarify with them on what we're putting out to families so that they understand how attendance is being taken.
So it was a new addition to the policy?
Yes.
Have we consulted with anyone in the VLO program to get any feedback on how that's working?
No, not yet, but we will through this process to ensure we have consistency across the board as the call mentioned.
Thank you.
My apologies.
And I'll be taking up the second, or the policy name for the second read. Thank you. That's why we do first read and second read. Okay, moving on to the public comment section, again, this is the second public comment section of the evening. This is for any comments that need to be made. We had three comments that were submitted, um, by email. And so, um, I am choosing to read these, um, tonight due to the nature of the emails. Um, I do not want, wish to place the burden on any of our staff in those readings. Some of them look lengthy though, and so I'm going to ask Ms. Casper to time, since we need to be fair. Couple of comments are allowed three minutes each and not to expand, and not to exceed thirty minutes of the meeting. We'll do the emails and we'll do in-person interviews here and then Zoom.
Okay.
Right? Um, the first email that we received is from Mr. Ben Deville, um, at seventy two oh five X X's Mill Terrace, the township of Ohio, four five oh four four. Um, Mr. Deville states, I am a community member and a proud parent of two Lakota graduates. I also serve on the Lakota Board of Ed, I've also served on the Lakota Board of Education from two thousand nine through two thousand seventeen, including some tough years with major budget cuts and other excitement. My two four, two four year, my two four year terms, including serving as board president, vice president, and a regular member. First, welcome to the board's newest member, Mike Pearl. Congratulations and best of luck. To the rest of the board, thank you for your hard work you have been doing this year. You have been dealing with a huge amount of uncertainty and challenge, and then you get hit with a resigning member. Wow. I've watched a few recent board meetings when you were handling the resignation of Mr. Parnell and were finding replacements to fill his vacancy. There seems to be a large amount of confusion about Mr. Lovell making a statement to the community about the circumstances of the resignation. As board president's position is a challenging one, these are times when you just need to run the board meeting. Um, there are times that you need to facilitate conversation, discussion, and try to get a discussion to a decision or consensus. There are other times that the board president serves as the voice of the board. Most times, when the press wants to speak to the Board of Education, the president feels that need. During my terms as board president, I read official statements that dealt with hiring, resignations, and tough votes. The statement that Mr. Lovell read to the community was a time that the board president was serving as the voice of the board. What he read was not new information to any other board member. He was stating facts and explaining the situation and the actions the board took. This was appropriate and efficient way to get a clear message out to the Lakota parents and community members. The board has major, has more major decisions in front of it. Let's move forward with the real business of the board, getting the best possible education to the students of Lakota. Our students, parents, and community are counting on you to focus on education and our kids. Thank you. The second email comes from, um, Mr. Rusty Jesse. I do not have an address. Oh wait, yes, I do. I do not have an address. Oh wait, yes, I do. Sixty-five sixty-four Justice Lane, Liberty Township, Ohio, four five oh four four. I think a breach of ethics was committed by the board president Friday, September eleventh, when he read the statement concerning the actual sequence of events that led to Mr. Parnell leaving the board. Board policy. Zero one two three specifically states, while serving as a member of the Board of Education, each member is expected to agree to abide by the following code of ethics. D, item D, recognize that individual board members have no authority to speak or act for the board. If you watch the nine eleven twenty twenty special meeting at about twenty-two minute mark, Mr. Level decides to read the statement concerning Mr. Parnell's departure. After he reads the statement, Mrs. O'Connor strenuously objects to him reading this statement. It is clear that the other three members of the board had not given their approval to the statement being released or read. During their discussion, it was revealed that the message was recommended by legal on nine ten, and the message had not been sent to the other board members until two thirty PM on nine eleven, when they were on their way to three PM meeting. During my interview with the board for the open board position on Saturday, September twelve, one of the questions I asked was that what were we allowed to discuss with the community? The answer I received was pretty much anything that did not happen in an executive session. I then asked Mr. Level if he went through all the proper procedures before releasing the statement. He said he went through legal. I asked him again if he went properly through the board. His response, his response was simply that he would not answer that question. So I asked an acceptable question based on what I had just been told, and he refused to answer it. The answer, because legal said so, is not an acceptable answer. Legal, legal works for the board, not the other way around. Paraphrasing what my mom would have said to me, if legal told you to jump into the high river off the bridge on I seventy-five and January, you'd do it. My questions, who determines, who determines if there was an actual violation by level? Is there an investigation by a local authority who is in charge of it? What are the consequences for unethical behavior by any Lakota board member? And what type of penalty can be leveled against Level if he is found guilty? How does it look to the community if a school board member will not answer a very simple yes or no question about a public statement by a board member? I look forward to your responses to my questions. Third, the third public comment that I have here is. From Mr. Justin Wells. And he lives at forty-four eighty-seven Aspen Drive, Liberty Township, Ohio. Hello, my name is Justin Well, I just read that, sorry. Since Mr. Level has decided to go on record on the September fourteenth board meeting and attempted to spread out my wife, Vanessa Wells' name and reputation, I feel it appropriate to respond to these comments. And relay the truth to the community in the same forum, since they did not get it from that board meeting. While I respect his position and he is entitled to his opinions, he is not entitled to his own facts. While Brad wanted to scapegoat his behavior onto my wife by suggesting he was set up, I want to make it clear she did not request a meeting with Brad, making his, I've been set up defense category concern. The time of his request for a meeting worried her because it was sent the day after Mr. Parnell resigned from his position, leaving the seats to be filled. After photos of my wife's conversation with the community were sent to him by one of his neighbors, the reason the timing for the request is questionable is because it is not initiated initiated over the past year. When my wife and I both repeatedly battled to get the board's attention, my daughter's life was threatened at school by a student who was arrested, and it was handled poorly, as you can imagine. There was no transparency. Mr. Level responded to this via Facebook months after we went through multiple board hearings and a trial was scheduled. Basically telling them that he would hear about it through someone else. What did we gather from the communication we had prior to that, the staff is that we should be quieter. We were told directly that if we decided to speak publicly at a board meeting, that would quote unquote make it much harder on our daughter. As you may recall about that time, this is when the discussion about transparency and the open public comment really hit the radar. Vanessa posted on social media that this meeting was requested because she was concerned that it would be an issue. If she applied for the open board seat, there's no room for confused on this. Her application was turned in on time and within the same timeframe everyone else was given with days left to apply. She turned her application prior to the meeting because she wanted to give Mr. Level the chance to cancel if he felt it was necessary. He instead responded to her application and said, thanks for applying. He was looking forward to their meeting. Which also means the suggestion that she was working for his, but Mrs. O'Connor is absurd and making ridiculous accusations against a fellow board member in a public forum is not, not only unprofessional, is my opinion completely unethical. I do not know what Mr. Level's intentions for the meeting with my wife or looking at his own actions afterwards. I do not believe they were meant to build any courageous quote unquote. Take the time to listen to his own statement to respond to the public's questions during the same meeting and others prior. Why do we keep talking about transparency? I think it's ridiculous. We have to waste time on this and that in regards to building community. But I've been looking forward to sharing my own personal thoughts on this parent quote, name of. I'll leave you all to decide his intent for yours. And while we prefer not to have to be involved in any of this, I believe we all have a quote unquote duty to serve our community, and none of us make that. All right, do we have any Zoom? Okay, Ms. Brand? On you, please.
Hi, can you hear me now?
It's your fan.
Okay, I am Darcy Brand. I'm at five one one nine Aspen Wood Drive, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And as you may be aware, October is Dyslexia Awareness Month, and I feel that Lakota needs to do better by our dyslexic students. Huffington Post reports that across the U.S., eighty-five percent of juveniles who interact with the court system are functionally illiterate, and sixty percent of the nation's inmates are illiterate. Lakota literacy is critical for our kids. It's estimated that one in five kids are dyslexic. I have a dyslexics who I feel would have graduated illiterate from Lakota if I hadn't stepped in and advocated for her. You may wonder why we don't see dyslexic numbers in Lakota as as you hear see here, one in five. Well, that's because Lakota doesn't want to see it and doesn't acknowledge it. Lakota fails our dyslexics by not saying dyslexia, not identifying our dyslexics, not partnering with parents when students have reading problems. Not providing reading intervention programs at dyslexics needs. RTI fails dyslexics. The RTI that my daughter went through for two years was a complete and utter failure. They don't ensure students are reading at grade level for reading. They're not even use our own their own standardized tests to evaluate students, and they blame the child for their inability to read. As a mom in the trenches with a child with a dyslexia, child with dyslexia, I can tell you Lakota is failing our dyslexics. There are many ways that we can improve them. We could say say dyslexia. We can acknowledge it. We can tackle it. We can use our testing data to determine how many Lakota students are reading at grade level. We can know our dropout rates and how many of those kids are not reading at grade level when they drop out. We can perform exit interviews to determine why these kids are dropping out. We can identify dyslexia and educate parents. If you can't, if you don't know they're dyslexic, you can't tackle the problem, and parents just don't know. We are a team, and we need to know that parents are the only people who are with this child from kindergarten to high school. We need to know why why our kids are not being able to read. We need to use scientifically proven proven structured literacy in our classrooms and in our interventions. We need to end Lucy Culkin and make sure the RTI students are getting structured literacy. Phonics first with fidelity. RTI for the size of my second grader, it was not taught with fidelity for her entire second grade year. The group size was doubled what it should have been. And we need to adjust. If it's not working, change the approach. We went through an entire year with no reading progress, which was actively pointing out that there and which I was actively pointing out, and there was no adjustment, no changes were made, and it was a complete waste of everyone's time. And and stop blaming our kids for not being able to read. They want to learn. They want to be like their friends. They are not doing this on purpose. A com.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We get the three minute time limit. Are there any other? Okay, Bridget Ruder?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
It's your fan.
Okay, my name is Bridget Ruder. I live at six zero five nine Lancashire Trail, and I am a current community member and a former Lakota parent. I'm a little discouraged by a lot of what I see on social media with the negativity that's addressed towards the board, and I wanted to take a minute to thank all of you for your time and your service to the community, to the students, and to us as taxpayers. The time that is required for you guys to to commit to this position. I know it's a great deal of time that you commit. It's not just these meetings. I know it's a lot of a lot of stress and again, a lot of commitment that you guys show in this role. I think this attempt to. Make such a fuss about this situation with Mr. Parnell is causing us to lose sight of of what happened with, you know, regarding his resignation. I've been a part of this district or was a part of this district since two thousand and five, and nothing like this has ever happened before. It was uncharted territory for all of you. So just like we have to give our students and our teachers a little grace during COVID nineteen, I feel like maybe some community members need to hear that they also need to give a little grace to our board for navigating a situation that's never been, you know, never been never happened before for them. Additionally, the we're losing sight of what what was said and what was done by Mr. Parnell. I don't know why the focus is is on the minutia instead of what happened and the fact that we have a new board member, which welcome to you, sir. And let's move on and do the best we can for our students with the board that we have now. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you. The additional. She's already spoken one time this evening. She should speak twice. I'm second at the same time. Different topic. Okay. Ms. Wells?
Hi, can you hear me? Oh, okay, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, Vanessa Wells, four four eight seven Aspen Drive. I just wanted to bring up a few concerns and questions that. I've been getting, you know, there's a common theme that's going on with some of the virtual learners and parents and caregivers that are helping their students through this. I think I believe I'm correct in saying that October twenty-sixth is now the date that parents will be required to decide if they want to enter the the second half of the school year. And a lot of different parents don't feel like that is enough time. I think there's a lot of concerns as far as what's going to happen come flu season. A couple of other things. Are they, are you hiring more teachers to accommodate increased class sizes when the VLO kids return? Because some of the classes are already really large. How do you plan to add more kids? A couple of other overwhelming things, and I'm trying to skim through these quick. There's a lot. And Mr. Miller, I will actually send you an email with some of this simplified. Some of the kids that are in seventh through twelfth grades who are on the block schedules, the teachers are giving work virtually for every day of the week, and it's not all of them. I know this is a process for everyone, so we're all adjusting. But this is extremely overwhelming to the students. Some are working between ten to twelve hours a day, and. What worries me the most and what's the most concerning is that I've heard multiple times that the kids are so stressed about getting the work and the assignments in that they actually aren't, they actually aren't even learning anything of quality, that it's been more about quantity. And the quantity, when it doesn't come with the instruction and some of the preparation for, you know, the assignments, it's getting to be really difficult and overwhelming for the students. There is also, I'm sorry, I'm looking through these. If these kids go back, will they be able to switch? Back into the classes that they were supposed to have that weren't made available through VLO? I think, and will specials be added to VLO at all for the second semester? One more thing. Mr. Love, I'm going to read. Part of the end of my husband's. Comment, and that is. Based upon what you did in the September fourteenth meeting, it seems like your actions were retaliatory, and it feels reasonable to conclude. That you're trying to intimidate not only me, but any other parents and community members so they do not speak up when we notice that things are being handled incorrectly. Now, I know you you all have told me that the board is not supposed to respond to Facebook social media concerns from parents or caregivers per board policy. So can you please inform me as to what policy states that you cannot respond in that way, but you are able to respond with accus.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Okay. I will start off and I will respond to the written comments since they are obviously directed to me. I just don't get them in the spotlight. So congratulations. So first off, no, I'm just going to start the exact same way that I started last meeting, apologizing to Matt and Jenny. That this is even a conversation that has to be addressed to the board, ongoing conversations. It's a distraction to the work that you're doing every single day, and I'm going to look at the camera and I'm going to say the exact same thing to our seventeen hundred staff members. That who I know because I'm engaging in the buildings on some level are working their. Rear ends up in incredible circumstances, and the amount of grace that we as a board need to extend to them in this period is just incredible. And so to the seventeen hundred staff members that are walking into our buildings or our virtual apartments every single day, thank you for that. And I'm sorry. I am sorry that us five up here are a complete distraction to the work that you need to get done, and I'm saying that from my standpoint because these emails are to me. And so I might do have a statement. I'm going to read in regard to Mr. Jesse's email. I am not going to respond to this, Ms. Vanessa Wells or her husband's email. It's done. I read the email. It's done. I'm done talking about it. All right, Mr. Jesse, I understand that you are critical of my decision to inform the public of Mr. Parnell's resignation and the circumstances surrounding his resignation during the September eleventh board meeting. I completely respect that you have a difference of opinion, and you are certainly entitled to whatever opinion it is that you have. However, as board president, I was confronted with an elected official who was openly advocating for the shooting. Of Lakota students, our students, our community members. I stand by my decision and my actions. I believe I acted in the best interest of the students, the staff, and the community. I have nothing further to say about that. Nothing.
So the darkness brands comments about dyslexia.
I will reach out to her. She said a couple of times about blaming the kids for that, and that's the first I've heard that. I'm not sure where that, you know, originated from, but I'll find out. And I'll have an email or anything from her, so I'll be talking to our team and we'll reach out. And there's probably some more there that we don't know. I know she didn't get to finish all her comments, so I want to be respectful of that as well. So. There's a situation like that, you know, people don't have to wait for a board meeting. They can shoot us an email or follow us or what have you, or. Approach one of the team members, so. I'll be doing that. And then if I can address, it's okay. Mrs. Casper, the address to VLO.
Yeah.
Couple of questions from Mrs. Wells. I talked about this on the coffee chat last week. Some of these things, but in terms of the staffing with our students, the. In theory, right now, and that's why it's a theory, but let me back up a little bit. The reason why we have to find out from parents, their decision about the second semester is there's a lot of planning that goes into this, as we said, going into this school year with starting VLO. So it's not so easy to take. Four thousand students and put them back into the system, potentially four thousand. I mean, obviously, there's not that many will come back, but that's the reason why we need to get a little bit of a handle on what that's going to look like, and I think that speaks to her concern about class sizes and specials and things like that. So. That's the reason why that window is going to be open from the sixth to October to the twenty-sixth. But in theory, the number of kids coming back to in-person instruction would be matched by the number of teachers coming back commiserate with sizes coming back to school. So. It won't be putting seven third graders in a classroom that already has twenty-five. It'll be another class coming back. We have to work the numbers. That's the data that we need, hence the deadline of October twenty-sixth. So it's things like that. And again, I think she mentioned she'll send me an email. That would be great. We don't have to wait a month for a board meeting to correct things up, where we can take care of them as soon as possible. I think that would probably be helpful. So always look at any of her voices.
Mr. Miller, are we continuing updating that? It's everything.
Yeah, the best place to go is lakotaonline.com forward slash. We are prepared. Oh, we checked out with still it. So that's. We are prepared. Hopefully that was still it. So that's always updated.
I think our number one thing is more than we can do is we can equip our superintendent treasure to do their job and do their job well. If we're waiting once a month to upload questions, they can't do their job well. And so it's our responsibility to direct our individual committee that asks these questions to our administration so they can update FAQ. And then other parents can see that because not everybody's in a selected social media Facebook group. And so it's really important that these questions be asked in the formal approach, the formal way. Contact the VLO email that Mr. Hurley man's, I believe, or his team man's, probably not personally, I don't think. But that's a great way to get all those questions and concerns answered so that the generalized public has access to that document. Because again, not everybody's tuning into the board meetings and not everybody wants the way to want to get that information as well. And I know our team is doing an incredible job getting help and answering the questions. I see it all the time. And so we just need to equip our leaders to be able to be in a position to do their job.
Or in front of, for the parents too, sometimes they get quicker response than waiting for a board meeting and then have to go to Matt, you know, you just send them that email. How do I want to inundate your inbox with any more emails that you're having?
Sometimes, you know, I'm not as responsive as the number that are coming in. But we have people at central office that pull those off. And there's other people like listening on email too that pick them up and send them forward on.
The only other comment was Bridget Ruder. Thanking us for, oh, here.
And, you know, I, again, say this all the time, that, you know, it's an honor to serve this district. It's an honor to serve our teachers, our staff, and our students, our families. And the great thing about this country is that any one of us out there, if they feel that they do this job or feel passionate about this job, step up, man. We'll help you. We'll show you how to pull your election report, get your signatures, and you can run and you can do this fantastic job up here. Hey, the 110 bucks or whatever we get a meeting. Your board taxes. So how about it? Any other comments or questions by the board about any of the public statements?
Can I also just add to Mrs. comment on ethics and relying on our attorneys? I mean, I view part of what we do is, is trying to protect the district from liability and, you know, would you jump off the bridge if your friend did? No. But do you follow your legal counsel's advice? Yes. I mean, they are a legal counsel. We're paying them to provide legal advice. So if you go to your legal counsel and they are advising you in this situation, which they have dealt with numerous districts across the state, and well, we have never dealt with the situation before. They have and their networks have. They're, it makes sense to rely on the advice of. So yes, I wasn't aware of that situation. I hadn't read that statement or who of it. But if legal is advising that this would be appropriate course of action to take, given the horrific situation we were facing, that made me comfortable going, there seems an appropriate course of action. Because I rely on our legal counsel to keep us from facing the larger liability. And that's how I look at it. So while others may not look at that as an appropriate response, to me, what else do you say? We don't know as laypeople more than our legal counsel. I can't get medical advice. I'm not a doctor. I can't get legal advice. I'm not an attorney. So we therefore rely on our legal counsel to keep the district from facing more legal liability. So I guess I felt like that slide, that response is appropriate, just as before we try to follow our policies.
Especially because again, it, I think somebody cut it on the call or called us. It's not something we deal with on a daily basis. I think the last time that a board member resigned was 24, 25 years ago, according to some board members that remember that happening, past board member, so.
It's also important when we remember as a board that all board members, they are equally knowledgeable and have the board's parenting in the interest of fairness and openness and transparency. And to make sure there are no violations of public sunshine laws, that all board members are kept informed. And I appreciate it is a difficult situation. But it certainly was not a matter of all board members being aware of that. So we can continue that. But there is a difference of opinion up here about how it's handled.
I agree. But I also, I absolutely agree with you. And there is a difference of opinion on how it was handled. But I also feel like we have a lot of work to do and maybe it's time to recognize that and move on. In my opinion, I'm just speaking for myself. And accomplishing that work as a part of board responsibilities.
And so actually, it's a good segue into, I don't know what the date is, it's October
2026?
26th, just to piggyback off of Linda's statement. You know, one of the things that we continue to do is we need to get better as a board. And we all have the ability to do that, right? Like we all can individually come to the table and create that we can be better. And so I've mentioned this prior to having OSBA come in to do support, board leadership training. We have actually decided to go outside of OSBA because, because we're red county, OSBA can't come here. They're not much traveling. We do, meaning COVID, meaning COVID, we're red, yes. And so we actually have our attorneys through who are going to be during the training. They're going to come here. So what you can expect from that is, and we're doing it during regular scheduled morning because I want the community to hear it as well. I think it's really important that our community understands what our role is aboard and what we can and can't do when it relates to engaging with our community as it relates to what we can and can't do in communication sunshine laws, as Mrs. O'Connor has mentioned. And so all of us hearing that together, and I can find, well, this is a great opportunity for you to kind of get that foundational element for what it means to be board membership. But again, I, I think that, you know, we have to think as a board that we can all be better and we can all be trained to do the same thing over and over again, and it just makes us better than we are. And so that will be at that board meeting. All right. Moving on, I guess I could, moving on to closing comments. We'll start with you, Mr. Pearl.
I had the opportunity to watch my son run in GNCs for junior high right outside for planes for cross country right before I came into the meeting. And again, he had a personal record rate for himself. He, he did better than his personal goal for himself and just finished. So that was certainly a proud moment for me before I walked in. But as I sat there and watched the race, I just thought how thankful I was for all the adults for those kids to get there and how excited those kids were as they finished that race. But just how many months were moved to get to where we are today. Certainly, nobody thought we would still be at school today. You know, when we started the cross country season, it was a contact sport and no contact sports were going to happen. Let alone now we had contact sports happening. I know I wasn't able to make it, but even at Mason, they had the band performance in person. I know I was a part of it, but that happened. And just how much adult investment has happened this year to move mountains for kids' opportunities. And how thankful I am both in the classroom and out of the classroom. How many investments have been made to put the smiles on those kids' faces today? And I just really came together for me, great hard work to be making. So thank you for all the adults making amazing things happen.
So Friday night, we'll be east west game. At Hill and West, and just want to wish those signs, so they all have our favorites. Go wish those signs. And we're not supposed to talk about them, but we will, so we will. Want to wish them the best of luck that night in the game against each other. And one of the pieces that we started in 2009, still an ongoing work project, is the Reach Out for the Food Drive. I just want to ask what you've heard about. We do know that at this particular time that some families are struggling even more than we usually have. And Reach Out Lakota does provide an important service for our local families. So that's coming together as a district and supporting families and really appreciate everyone's effort. So please make a point of drafting that on and let's stump those buses again.
So thinking back on Mrs. O'Connor, not only is it the east-west game, but their both have advanced and that's the second round of playoffs. So that's kind of exciting. So the community wants to watch the chatterbox match where they can screen the game and also Twitter updates so you can keep up with what's happening in the game. I just want to do a shameless plug that my leadership 21 cohort did not mention, which was starting the community of the fund through community foundation. In order to start that fund, you need to have $5,000 that stays in that fund. So in essence, we raised during COVID, not being in person, over $10,000. And so you have to keep that five in there. So whatever we had are committed to raise above and beyond the five to start the fund was in there.
Great information.
So the future, I love the future years of its need that for their startup.
And I hate to be the class that follows you. Being a graduate of Leadership 21, I know that's definitely a nice ending to be here to come up with that. But and just a shout out to them, you know, thank you. You know, when I look at the list of donations, our community constantly steps up for us. You know, we've had a list of, a group of individuals tonight that we recognize. It's not always about the monetary donation either, but we have our community, our people that step up for our district and our students. And thank you to them.
I request you go first next time.
I know, Brad, you don't do a good job. I know, starting on track.
To catch Mr. Pearl off guard. Yeah. Just really fast, I just appreciate seeing the student spotlight again tonight. That was really nice. And the video was a nice touch too. It'd be nice to see them here. But I think that worked out really well for us. And to our cyber academy community partners, and that, that's a huge lift. And that doesn't happen without them. And they are on me, they're on Keith and his team a lot in terms of just ramping things up and ramping things up. So we talk about COVID and people needing jobs. We get that. Here's a ministry that needs more because of COVID, because the actors are staying home and doing their own thing. So that's been very impressive to see for, for all of our kids. And then the other thing in regards to, I just want to make mention, I would not want to be riddled by it for Scott Kaufman. Going into the east-west game, just as a reminder, we do not dictate the number of tickets we can sell. That is set by our governor in Columbus and our number of total tickets is 520. And so there will be representatives from OHSAA that will be there making sure that we are adhering to those guidelines. And I know that our two athletic directors are working hard to make sure that everything's taken care of. So I just want to make mention of that and good luck to our kids. And it was great too that our bands got to perform on Saturday and just the support they get from their parents and the machine that has to operate, not just the kids and their performances, but loading the trucks and moving things and just getting there and the logistics. And it was starting to rain and things like that. So thanks to our parents that support our, our kids.
I had a moment the other day. We were all videoing for the stump of us and it was a lot of fun. I was thinking in that moment, like, we also, the entire organization was buzzing. And, you know, when you think about what we do right now, we have to tell our story in a very unique and different way. You know, we can't tell our story by standing on the sidelines of the game. And there are a lot of things we can't do. And so just a shout out to Mrs. Fuller and her team. And I know she, she'll, she'll give them a shout out. But, you know, you, they're thinking different. They're doing things differently under a budget cut to continue to tell the story of our district and of our families and the experiences. So it was fun getting to shoot that video and see the kids and just be at the school. But your professionalism around that is just incredible. So thank you for all you're doing and your team. I know it's a group effort. You all have different skills that you bring to the table. But thank you for all you're doing to help tell our story during this crazy time. We truly appreciate it.
I would like to mention that we all caught the hook meal on the first try. One take.
So thank you for that. Okay, this is an opportunity for us to enter into executive session. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session to consider the employment, appoint, dismissal, discipline, commercial, devotion, or compensation of a public employer official?
Yes. Mrs. O'Connor? Yes.
Yes. There'll be no action taken after.